How things have changed. Okay.
Call a meeting to order.
I'd like to lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clock's actually faster, eh?
I'd like to welcome you to a regular meeting of the Board of Education, pardon me, Board of Commissioners. Remind you that this is an open meeting, it's being recorded, it's available online. So we'll move into awards, recognition, and correspondence. I believe you have something, Dan?
I do, I have actually several, so I'm trying to get you out of here real quick, I'll read fast.
Fine.
The first three are from the Umatilla County Sheriff's Office, and it kind of goes back, the first couple to the holidays. The 2021 Toy Drive. This December, Umatilla County Sheriff's Office Deputy Michael Elwood and his family organized the Third Annual Toy Drive. The Toy Drive began with Deputy Elwood's daughter, who was diagnosed with cancer at age fifteen. During her treatments in a children's hospital, she decided she wanted to be able to give back to the hospitals and do a toy drive for the children. Deputy Elwood coordinated with Walmart Distribution and multiple law enforcement agencies to collect toys for the children in hospitals and Ronald McDonald's homes. Each year it has grown, and this year's response was overwhelming, with approximately four semi-loads of toys being collected. The toys were delivered to Eotech in Hermiston, where volunteers from Umatilla County Sheriff's Office, local law enforcement agencies, Walmart Distribution sorted and boxed them up for delivery. Deputy Elwood, Walmart Distribution, and other Umatilla County Sheriff's Office deputies volunteered and went on the road for days. In each city they joined with law enforcement from that area and delivered toys to the following hospitals and Ronald McDonald Homes. St. Anthony's Hospital, Good Shepherd Hospital, Randall's Children Hospital in Portland, Oregon, two Ronald McDonald Houses in Portland, Oregon, Dora Barker Children's Hospital in Portland, Oregon, Mary Bridge Children's Hospital in Seattle, Washington, Seattle Children's Hospital, Seattle, Washington, Ronald McDonald House, Seattle, Washington, Cadillac Pediatric Hospital, Ritzman, Washington, Sacred Heart Children's Hospital, Spokane, Washington, Shriners Children Hospital, Spokane, two Ronald McDonald Houses in Spokane, Children's Village Medical Clinic in Yakima, Washington, Yakima Memorial Hospital Pediatric Unit in Yakima. Additionally, so many toys were donated, they were able to supply toys to other local programs in Umatilla County, including District Attorney's Victim Assistance, Umatilla County, local foster families through DHS, CARES Program in Umatilla County, Hermison School District, The Giving Tree, Agape House, Guardian Care Center, and Made to Thrive Program. The next one is the 2021 Christmas Families. This year, Umatilla County Sheriff's Office sponsored two families for Christmas. Between the two families, ten foster children were given special gifts for Christmas. Umatilla County Sheriff's Office Dispatcher Sherry Hutchinson coordinated the giving. Employees from multiple Sheriff's Office divisions donated gifts and other requested items. Both families received a grocery gift card and other household needs. Each child received approximately six or seven gifts of toys, clothing, snow clothes, and shoes. This was so special because each donation was picked specifically for the child, and every child received toys that were on their want list and clothing that suited their special needs. Umatilla County Sheriff's Office Deputy Elwood also provided a generous donation of toys to each child from his Toy Drive. To deliver the goodies, Deputy Doug Primmer dressed up as Santa Claus, and with Deputy James Baker, Deputy Rowan Hayes, and Sergeant Josh Roberts jumping in as Helper Elves. Our friends from Umatilla Tribal Fire Department and Umatilla County Fire District One generously helped with delivering the donated items to the family in each of their districts. UCSO dispatchers helped Sherrick with collecting and wrapping the gifts, together with covering shifts when she was out working for Santa. The smiles on the faces were worth all the efforts. Merry Christmas. The 2021 Shop with a Cop. On December 11, 2021, Umatilla County Sheriff's Police Officers, together with officers from Pendleton Police Department and Pilot Rock Police Department, had the privilege to participate in Shop with a Cop at Walmart Pendleton. Local kiddos met for breakfast with Santa and Mrs. Claus. Then they were paired up with an officer and helper to shop for items on their Christmas list. Officers even jumped in to participate in the wrapping. Every family was also provided a Christmas meal. The event helps to build lasting positive relationship between children and the law enforcement by giving them a positive experience with us. We extend that thank you to Pendleton Police Department for coordinating the event and inviting us to participate. Also, a thank you out to Pendleton Walmart for hosting. I'm going to save the last for Commissioner comments during the wrap-up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schaefer?
I have none.
Well, since we're on recognition, and I see Mike McHenry on here, I can accomplish something that my wife told me to handle. Yesterday, much to our surprise, the garbage truck arrived, however, it was not the regular garbage truck, it was a smaller truck with chains on it. But we live in the most, probably the least accessible home in the city of Pendleton, and lo and behold, they made it to our house. My wife went out onto the deck to visit with them, said, "What in the world can I do to thank you?" And they said, "Just tell our boss that we made it to your house and how pleased you were." So there you go.
Thank you, George. We appreciate the recognition. Yes, it's been difficult, and we try to get to everybody, and if we don't, we try to call who we can't get to, and it's been a challenge. Hopefully, we're through the worst of this, I hope.
I never dreamed we would see them, and it was an alternate vehicle, but much appreciated. Thank you.
I appreciate the recognition of it.
Okay, we have no minutes of previous meetings. Any additions to the agenda?
There was one that's not on the printed agenda, but it is on the electronic one. It's number six.
Number six, so it was added there.
Okay. Any public input from someone not talking about a specific item? All right, we will move into our business items. The first item is the election of 2022 Board Officers. And I might indicate that before we do that, I actually was supposed to be in Oklahoma City today. I could not get out of my home, let alone Pendleton, and therefore, I'm on a national conference call that I must get back to immediately. But, so I will leave immediately after the election of officers. So with that, we'll move into the election Board Officers for 2022.
I moved, well, let's read this. Is that line in Order Number BCC 2013078? The Chair position rotates among the three Commissioners. The proposed Chair for 2022 is Commissioner Schaefer, with Commissioner Doran as the Vice Chair. And with that, I move to adopt Order Number BCC 2022-001.
I'll second that. Comments or questions? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Schaefer, you may have my chair. I only wish you'd had it a year ago. There you go.
All right, enjoy your call. Thank you. Thank you for your time as Chair, by the way.
My pleasure.
The last, one thing I did want to recommend, though, is that Commissioner Murdock does have the most vehicles of anybody in the parking lot today, so I would put that up.
Oh.
So, okay, number two, any agenda solid waste rate increase? Doug, are you going to handle that?
I don't see Gina Miller on the line, so what's before the Board is a proposed rate increase by Humbert's Refuse. This has been through the Solid Waste Committee, Advisory Committee, and they reviewed it and voted on October 22nd to approve the rate increase. It's now before the Board for consideration. The rate increase was posted in the paper. We have not received any complaints about that, so it can move if the Board requests it for consideration and adoption. And the proposal is that these will be effective March 1, 2022. And on the line is both the Chair of the Committee, Mike McHenry, and also Katie King from Humbert's Refuse.
I have one quick question, and I read through this, and I wasn't really, I think I got it, but it's an explanation on the new charges on the boxes, on the annual fee, and then the deduction of uses, or can somebody explain that to me real quick?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm not sure which one you're looking at.
I think it's the one with the annual payment for the drop boxes, and then you get a credit for every time it's dumped.
No, it's not drop boxes, those are 300-gallon cans.
Okay.
And so we don't charge, we only charge when we dump them. So we just added rent, because some people don't dump them at all, all year long.
So is it an added fee, and then there's a rebate on each time it's dumped, or is it just added on to it?
Right. So 100 is like the max, and if they dump it five times, we won't charge them any rent.
Gotcha, gotcha.
But if they don't dump it at all, they'll get charged rent.
Okay. I'd move for approval of the rate increase for Humbert's Refuse.
And I believe there's an order, I'm sorry, it's not on the pinkie, it's Order Number BCC 2022-002.
Okay. Move, I don't have that in front of me.
Is it down farther?
Yeah, it's at the very end.
Okay, let me see if I can grab this.
There it is, right there.
Oh, I got it, okay. Move for adoption of Order Number BCC 2022-002.
Say it. All fair and open, say aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. You're more than welcome to continue watching the rest of our meeting, but if you have other places to be, we certainly understand.
Thank you for your time.
And for joining us. Public Horse Equipment Update, number three.
This is for, and, oh, is Tom on here? I don't.
I don't see him.
He was, I think I, he was out past midnight last night, so.
He's probably out of here right now.
Yeah, I haven't called him this morning, so. So this is for an asphalt distribution truck. It's one that they've been looking for for quite some time. It's replacing a 1977 truck without a whole lot of, or without a whole lot of explanation. I'll try to answer any questions I can. I've been kind of involved with this, so if there are any questions.
I'm familiar enough with it, I don't have any questions.
I would move to approve addition of asphalt oil distributor to the 2021-2022 Equipment Replacement List and adopt Order Number RD 2022-2022-01.
I'll second. Any further discussion on that? All fair and open, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Number four, Emergency Management Software Renewal. Is, who's in this?
Mr. Roberts on this.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I see Tom on there.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Roberts, Umatilla County Emergency Manager. We'll make this brief this morning. If you recall, about a year ago, we accepted delivery of some highway electronic reader boards on trailers, as well as some that are rapid deployment, pop-up ones. One of the key elements to those items is that we have the ability to access them remotely from any computer or through Bluetooth from our phones, so that from a safe distance, if they're deployed in a hazardous zone for some reason, we can change the messaging. We can also change the messaging unanimously across all of them simultaneously. We did also have, through that grant program, the same capacity delivered to us from Morrow County. We were collaborating on that grant. And to continue with our annual subscription for remote access, we do have a platform in place. It's an iCloud-based platform, and it's one platform for all the signs for both counties. So what we're asking for right now is the authority to sign the quote that will align the, all of these signs into one singular payment timeline, as well as continue on then into the following March of 2023. So it would bring all the signs in line, build together, as well as make March 2023 our annual re-up for that subscription. Following the signature of the quote, then, they will invoice us accordingly. So I'm asking also that we authorize those payments now, so that we don't have to keep coming back in front of you through this process. The total price right now is $8,565.81 for both counties, and then we will request a reimbursement from Morrow County for their piece of it of $4,282.90.
How many signs do we have on total between the counties?
We have one large Wonko reader board sign on a trailer, one small that has the capacity to function as a radar board, which is very, very awesome for our law enforcement community to use, and they access all their reports through the same platform. And then we have a couple of additional pop-up ones that fold up and can fit in the trunk of a car for rapid deployment.
And those are, you can retrieve electronic information from those two?
Mostly, yeah. It's not as in-depth as the law enforcement one, because they don't have built-in radars on those, like the little law enforcement one does. But we can, an example of which, when we had it deployed out for code event, the wind took one of those and knocked it over, and almost instantly, I was getting through this iCloud platform, an email sent to me that said that there had been an impact to the sign. So we do have some capabilities with those.
With that low number of signs, is this be a minimum fee? Can we add on to this before we hit a limit of any kind?
I'm not sure I understand the question, Mr..
So we have two signs that are fully capable of this, taking advantage of this software, and two that have minimal responses. That's four signs. Does this software agreement have a minimum number of units that can be involved?
No, we can add to it at any point in time if we wanted to, if we increase the number of signs. It's just that total is on a per-sign basis. Each one has its own subscription rate, and part of the reason for the cost is because they are communicating with the iCloud platform via a Verizon connection, so there is also that to take into consideration as part of that subscription.
Because, I guess I'm confused there, Tom. So this also includes cellular to the cloud, or explain that.
Cellular data connectivity, so the signs are always in contact with the internet, so that we can then send and receive information two ways with each of the signs.
Okay, and where's the information stored?
On a cloud server that we then have access to with the, I'm trying, sorry, All Traffic Solutions Company.
And that, is that information ours, even if we don't continue this from?
That's my understanding.
Okay. That's all the questions I have. I move to authorize signature of the quote to proceed with use of the system until renewal in March 2023, as well as authorizing payment of the invoice reflecting the quote, this quote amount when received.
Okay, I'll say it. Your full discussion? All fair and open, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Board schedule?
Looking at the Board's agenda for the next several months, there is one Board meeting where there is a lacto quorum. It's the second Board meeting in February, scheduled for February 16th. And what the proposal is, is to move it up a week to February 9th, so that you will have two Board meetings in the first two weeks, and there won't be any further until March. That's primarily because the rest of February is pretty well booked.
Okay.
I move to accept the reschedule of February 16th meeting to February 9th of 2022.
Say it. All fair and open, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Number six, Court Facilities Grant Application.
The, I ask this to be brought back, because I apologize, I had some very incorrect information, actually way out of whack during our last Board meeting when we had this discussion. So I have supplied the information to Commissioner Schaefer and Commissioner Murdock, but real quickly, to go through in kind of a synopsis, what we're talking about is Umatilla County getting in line to potentially have the opportunity to receive matching funds from the state for a court, a new courthouse, a remodeled courthouse, or whatever the courthouse assessment committee brings back. It's a two-step. The letter of intent is due on January 10th, and then the presentation and the narrative is due on January 24th. Last time, we asked for basically $20,000 to cover the expense of having a professional narrative and presentation put together. We're bringing this back now, not asking for any funds for the narrative or the presentation. But to correct some of the discussion from the last meeting, there was an assessment done in 2008, 2009 of the courthouses throughout the state when the new courthouse, AOC OJD Committee was put together. And then 2008, 2009, now these were ranked best to worst. Stafford Hansel was ranked number six overall, Umatilla County Courthouse ranked number 25 overall. Stafford Hansel was ranked number six in security best to worst. Umatilla County Courthouse ranked number 36 best to worst. Stafford Hansel was ranked number six life safety best to worst. Umatilla County Courthouse ranked number 34 life safety best to worst. The study also had information on the structures themselves and the courtrooms, a lot of information. But those were kind of the bottom lines. So since then, several counties have actually finished, begun and finished the construction of their courthouse. There are several more that are in the process of either applying, finish their study planning and applying for construction funding, or applying for funding, study planning funding. With that said, if you pull out, if you pull out those folks that are already completed or in process, that would put Umatilla County actually two places below Multnomah County, which at the time when Multnomah County went to the Oregon Legislature to ask for additional and special funding and special legislation to rebuild or build the new Multnomah courthouse, that would put Umatilla County's courthouse actually two places below where Multnomah County was on the list when they were described as the worst courthouse in the state. So we don't want to put this off, we, Umatilla County is at the point of need. So what we're asking right now is to bring back to the Commission for Approval of Application for Grant Request to the AOC OJD Court Facilities, or I move to approve application for grant request to the AOC OJD Court Facilities Task Force, including Letter of Interest due January 10th, and application for planning grant due January 24, 2022, utilizing county staff. That's the motion.
So I've got a couple of questions.
Sure.
As you stated, the study that you referred to was done in 2008 and '09. Since that time, our courthouse now has a single point of entry with a security screening station at the only entrance to the courthouse. You have to walk through an X-ray machine and a metal detector for anything you bring into the courthouse. Where would that, and what would that do to those numbers?
I can only guess. Obviously, we haven't gone through, well, I can tell you what we have seen in comparison. Almost every courthouse has already gone through the same thing we have. So our place in the list would probably not change much, except that there's very few, very few court systems that you go through county services to get to a county courthouse. So it could actually even put us in a worse position.
But it could make us better, too.
It's not going to make us much better, because everybody else has already done it, too.
Okay, so when's that, next time they do that study, when does that come out?
They're not going to do another.
They won't do another one, that's too bad.
Yeah, no, I agree. In fact, when our committee, you're right, Mr. Schaefer, when our committee started working, what we had to do was do our tours and actually did tours with DLR, and the major issues were identified then. The front door security is an item, don't get me wrong, but the biggest problems we have in our court is our courtrooms, our jury rooms, all of those different aspects, technology. All the things that were listed in the study have only gotten worse, not better because of the pandemic.
So if we approve this today, what's the next step?
The next step is a letter of interest on January 10th, and then we present our narrative and presentation on January 24th to the AOC OJD Committee.
So there's still, when do we have to pay the $100,000 or $200,000, or whatever that figure is?
Whenever we get approved at the AOC OJD.
So if we get approval from that committee, how much do we have to pay?
It'll all depend on the, I'm just guessing, $100,000 for what we did at the whole.
So how much does the study cost?
$200,000 minimum.
So do we have a written something from the state in writing that they will pay X amount of dollars towards the remaining funds?
That's exactly what the program is. The program states it, not us. We don't have a written agreement with the state, because we haven't been selected. The program itself defines that, that it's a 50% match. Now, with that said, with that said, the more additional state agencies you get involved, that dollar amount can go down to the county, like buying the, take Stafford Hansel, where we had an overload of community corrections. If we have the ability to bring community corrections into the discussion, or if they want to, they can also actually reduce not only the cost to us of the study, but reduce the cost of the construction itself.
So where does it say that the most we will pay is $100,000? Where is that?
It's going to be in this narrative that we present.
Right.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Dan, but I believe that if we're accepted for the grant, we have the option, I mean, I would assume then we would do an RFP for someone to do the study, and at that time, we could say we're in or we're out, based on how much that RFP costs. So you're limited by your decision there. I mean, if they say it's going to cost $400,000 to do the study, the planning study, and the state's going to cover half of it, then that, our share's up $200,000, and maybe we don't want to do that. But they could say the study's, you know, $150,000, and then our cost is 75. Is that?
That's exactly right.
I thought the grant had a limit to it, though, a dollar amount.
The grant does, it's 750.
Okay.
So this, any action we take today will not lock us into further funding at this point going forward?
I would assume not.
Is that?
No. Nothing's locked in. I mean, there have been several counties that have dropped out of planning state, well, two that I know of. They said there's more, but I only know of two. But several, I know of at least three counties have dropped out during the construction phase. But several, I know of at least three counties have dropped out during the construction phase, too, after going through the planning study.
So my biggest concerns are that I don't know how much we would be on the book for. But if, what I'm hearing today is, if we adopt this, we don't, we're not out anybody, is that?
Zero.
Okay.
All we're doing is, is putting the narrative together and moving from there. And then you also, at the Latin, discussed bonds. Bonds aren't the only avenue to build new courthouses nowadays. Plaquemines County is actually doing it with a private investor. It was, through special legislation, it's a pilot program. And the way it's going right now, it looks like that that's going to be an accepted practice and policy to be able to use private investors. So it's, it, plus they're going to, theoretically are going to allow a higher percentage from other state agencies. My biggest concern right now is the condition of our courthouse. I think if we don't have the vision to start this process, we're going to be sunk.
Well, I'd argue that, actually, but, but I guess where I'm coming from is, I don't want to put money out right now, and that's, that was my biggest thing. Two weeks ago, or whatever it was, last week, I guess, last week. You know, I didn't want to shell out twenty thousand dollars to, because there's too many unknowns for me. And I feel better about this than I did last week, especially that we don't, we're not having to come up with any funds today. So with that, I will second the motion. Okay, so we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All fair and open, motion, say aye.
Aye, thank you.
Okay. Any further, commissioners?
Yeah, I do want to kind of combine a couple of them, Commissioner Schaefer. One is a letter from, from Sheriff Littlefield concerning SAR's, SAR's performance on Monday and Tuesday. So instead of me doing, I'm going to read the, the letter from the Yumitilla County Sheriff's Office. Some of you might have seen this on Facebook. A huge thank you to the members of the Yumitilla County Sheriff's Office search and rescue. Sergeant Dwight Johnson, Senior Deputy Rowan Hayes, and many volunteers have been out since about six-thirty last night rescuing stranded motorists. The reports of stranded motorists in the Milton Free Water area began coming in, and SAR was activated. They had to follow a snowplow up Highway eleven just to get through. As they got close to Milton Free Water, even the snowplow got stuck. All night, they have been going from call to call rescuing people that are stranded. They are just now getting back to the office and heading home, just in time for the next storm to hit. We love our volunteers, they are invaluable. Please stay off the roads and give the first responders a chance to rest and to be safe. Let's give those hard-working road crews a chance to get those roads cleared, too. To all of you out last night, thank you for your service. The following SAR's members were out in last night's mission. Bill Morris, Dr. Dave Roddemaker, Nana Roddemaker, Daniel Gardner, Grant Mountlock, and Nathan Temple. It was a long and difficult night for them, and they all performed superbly. Thank you. The next one is, is, I'd like to thank our Public Works Department. It is, it is a heck of a storm, and I'm not going to say it's over yet by any means. I think, I think that we're kind of maybe at the end of the first quarter, looking at the weather and, and the weather going out. But on Saturday, late Saturday night, and Sunday, Public Works Director Tom Fellows started calling me with his pre-planning strategy, went over that, actually had some of the roads that were the biggest concern to cross public travel, had those closed on Sunday until we ran out of road close signs, which saved a lot of motorists from entering areas that they really shouldn't have been in at all. So the, the pre-planning was huge. And then on Monday, the, it became a complete county-wide effort. Not only did the west end have its issues, which were different than the east ends, we had everybody in between. So all, all in all, we had county crews moving kind of in a swarm to try and address areas. East, the east end of the county was so socked in that it was just not even a smart move to try and get to some of those roads. With that said, at the same time, we were still able to open areas for the power companies to be able to at least unload their snow cats and get to fallen trees and get power restored to a lot of areas. We actually plowed Yuma Piine Road for ODOT. So there was a lot of, a lot of coordination, a lot of assistance from all the different agencies. And then, you know, it got into late night, Monday night, Tuesday, and into today. We, this, this storm has created some kind of, set some very rare snow berms because of the rain and the freezing behind it making such heavy conditions. ODOT's actually brought in some of their heaviest-duty snowplows and got them stuck. So we've had to use everything from graders to loaders to deep plows, to truck plows, to sand, just to get to them. And some of the innovative techniques that the Public Works Department came up, with what tools they have on hand, I think deserves a lot of, a lot of gratitude. And with that said, more than anything, I'd also like to thank the general public for their help in a lot of agriculture settings. People were helping their neighbors get out, get to the end of the roads. In a lot of cases, just helping each other to get their animals fed, getting them taken care of, was, was a hot, very high priority. So not only are Public Works, but the public itself has been very active in this storm. The calls I've gotten and the compliments back to the Public Works in the last couple of days have just been numerous, and it makes a guy feel good. Nobody wants to go through this, but when you go through it with, with the sheriff's office and Public Works, it's amazing what their passion is to make sure that, that the county is taken care of in the best ways.
Yeah, well said. I completely agree with everything you said, so I'm not even trying to span on, you did a great job, so. All right, with that, we are adjourned.